Good morning, everyone. You got it, all right. Okay, I hope everyone had a great weekend. Just would like to call the March 28, 2023 meeting of the Charlotte Zoning Board of Adjustment is now in session. I am Douglas Wilson, Chairman. Also sitting on today's board is Deborah Dryden, Tariq Hamid, Hamilton Court, and Marshall Williams. Also present is Lisa Carter, our Planning Project Manager. She was here, Tariq Hagler Gray. She's a Senior Assistant City Attorney. Jill Sanchez, also a Senior Assistant City Attorney. Terry Edwards, clerk to the board, and Candy Thomas, who is our court reporter.
And additionally, Solomon Fortune will be our new zoning administrator. Solomon Fortune.
Sorry about that, Solomon. And what's your last name again? Okay, we also have Solomon Fortune, who I believe replaced Chad. All right, all right, great. Hey, welcome to see. I would like to start acknowledging that we are conducting this meeting in person. This is the third-person, in-person meeting in 2023 of the Charlotte Zoning Board of Adjustment. And as always, I would like to ask for your patience today as we proceed. There may be slight delays as we transition between speakers, participants, and presentations. The Zoning Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial board that is governed by the North Carolina General Statute and the Charlotte zoning ordinance. We conduct evidentiary hearings on request, prevariances, and appeals among other requests. Before we begin to hear the cases on today's agenda, I would like to provide some important information on the steps that were taken to ensure that each party's due process rights are protected as we proceed. Notice of this meeting was provided to the applicants and the public in several ways. Notice of today's hearing was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of each subject property and notified to property owners of the in-person meeting. Notification letters also stated to contact the city immediately if there were any objections to the case being heard on today's agenda. Notice was also provided by placing signs on each property and by publishing notice on the city's website. The notices for today's meeting contain information about means by which the public can access today's proceeding. And finally, any individual wishing to participate in today's evidentiary hearings were required to sign up prior to today's proceedings. This information was also included on the board's website. Application for a variance for the regulations in the zoning ordinance will follow as the agenda is required. The zoning administrator or zoning staff member will identify the cases and recommend approval of the variance with any recommended conditions based on specific reasons. The chairperson will ask if anyone wants to speak in opposition. If there is such a person, then the case will be moved to the regular agenda and will be heard at a later date. The chairperson will ask if the board has questions for staff or if there is any reason the board wishes to move the case to the regular agenda. The chairperson calls for a motion and a second to approve the variance. Chairperson will hold a roll call vote. The order of the agenda will be as follows. All parties who plan to give testimony pro or con must be sworn in. A zoning staff member will explain why a permit was denied or why a variance is requested. The board may question the staff member, and then the applicant may question the staff member. The applicant presents their testimony for this case. The board may question the applicant, and the staff member may also question the applicant. The applicant may present sworn witnesses, but they will be subject to questioning. Other parties wishing to speak pro or con will be given reasonable time to present sworn testimony. Staff and then the applicant will be given an opportunity for rebuttal. The chairperson calls for a motion and a second to approve the variances. The chairperson will then hold a roll call vote. After hearing each case, the board will review each case and render a decision. This is usually done in closed deliberations after hearing each regular agenda case. However, the board may elect up to 30 days to render a decision. You may remain present during deliberations, or you may call the zoning staff after the session to receive the decision of the board. All exhibits must remain with the board. Exhibits were recommended to be provided to the clerk no later than 12:00 PM on Monday, March 27. If your case is not appealed to Superior Court after 30 days, you may pick them up, or they will be destroyed. If you feel there is a conflict of interest of any member of the board or an association that would prejudice your case, please let it known at the start of your case. The board is acting in a quasi-judicial capacity for purposes of this hearing and can only accept sworn testimony. While the board will not specifically exclude hearsay evidence, it is only given limited weight. The North Carolina State Bar has issued an advisory opinion that it is the unauthorized practice of law for any individual who is not an active member of the bar to appear for another or otherwise assist or represent another at a quasi-judicial hearing on zoning and land use matters. All applicants should have been provided with a copy of the advisory opinion as part of the application packet. If you are a property owner or a non-lawyer here on behalf of a property owner and have not received a copy of that opinion, please notify the clerk that the documents will be provided to you. If, as a result of this advisory opinion, the applicant would like to request a continuance of his or her case, the board will consider such requests at the start of that case. Appeals to this board is to the Methanburg County Superior Court. You have 30 days from the date of the board's written decision and wish to appeal in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 160D-405D. In order to receive a written request, excuse me, in order to receive a written copy of the decision, any aggrieved party must file a written request for a copy of the board's decision by filling out the form which must be filed with the board clerk or the chairperson at the time of the hearing of the case. We will hear, not really five cases today, but we'll hear about five cases today. Two recommended items, two regular agenda items, and one appeal. Of course, I'll explain after my speech or what's going on with some of these cases. The clerks of the board will read the names of anyone who opposes this case. So I was notified that on the agenda, case number 2023-011, they are requesting a continuance as well as appeals case number 2022-051. So I believe the board is in agreement with that, and those cases will be heard at a later date.
Mr. Chair, the board needs to vote on the continuance.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, real quick. So for case 2023, for both? Okay, so 2023-011 and 2022-051, continuance till May.
All right, so 2023-011 is to May, and the appeals is until, is that June? Is that also May? Okay. Okay. All right.
All right, I make a motion to accept the continuance requests for case number 2023-011 and 2022-051 until May.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All right, so a motion was made by Mr. Dryden to move case number 2023-011 as well as case number 2022-051 to May of 2023. And the motion was seconded in by Mr. Court. Now we move to a roll call vote. Mr. Court?
Yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Yes.
Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Okay.
That will be the May 30th date.
Cases have been moved to May. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, so moving back to the recommended agenda. The first case we will hear is case number 2023-015. As always, Lisa, I have to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter at hand? Much. And Terry, is anybody here in opposition to this case?
No, Chair.
Okay, all right.
All right, our first case is a residential rear yard variance request. The applicant is requesting a 20-foot variance from the required 45-foot rear yard to prevent renovation and expansion within the established rear yard. And I'll give you a minute to look over your findings if you just let me know when you're done.
Okay, Lisa, you may proceed.
Exhibit number one is a vicinity map of the property. Exhibit number two is a zoning map. The property is zone R3, single family. Exhibit number three is an aerial map of the property. Exhibit number four is a close-up aerial map of the property. Exhibit number five is background. The property was subdivided in 1950, and this is the 1950 subdivision plat. You can see the property here on the corner. The home on the property was built in 1954. And the required rear yard for the property is 45 feet. There's an established rear yard of 24 feet, so you can see the 24 feet here and then the required 45-foot rear yard there. The home is nonconforming since it predates today's 45-foot rear yard requirement. Exhibit six is the variance request. The applicant wishes to make repairs and renovations and an addition to the rear of the home that encroaches into the required rear yard and is asking for a 20-foot variance from the 45-foot rear yard. So the applicant provided this depiction. So this is the existing home. And then the area that they're going to redevelop is in pink. So it's actually a foot less than the existing encroachment. And the green is just the compliant building footprint of the home. Exhibit seven is variance criteria, and this is from the zoning ordinance. When unnecessary hardships would result from carrying out the strict letter of the zoning ordinance, the Board of Adjustment shall vary any of the provisions of the zoning ordinance upon a showing of all of the following. Unnecessary hardship would result from strict application of the ordinance. The hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property. The hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or property owner. And the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the zoning ordinance. Exhibit number eight is considerations. Staff finds the request meets the standards for granting a variance. Strict application of the ordinance would prevent the proposed addition since most of the home is located within the required rear yard, leaving no compliant building area on the rear of the home. So you can see the compliant building area in green here. And here is the existing home highlighted in yellow. So there's no compliant building area behind the home. The hardship results from conditions peculiar to the property. The established setback is about 86 feet, which is 56 feet greater than the required 30 feet for the R3, and decreases the area in the rear yard. So here's the 86 feet in the front. The applicant states that locating the addition in another area of the home would be difficult since the 45-foot rear yard cuts through the center of the home. So you can see how it cuts through the center of the home there. It'd be hard to locate the addition in front of the home because of a large tree. You can see the tree in the picture. Exhibit number nine is considerations. The hardship wasn't caused by the applicants, who were not aware of the encroachment. When they purchased the home in 2013, the rear yard was not shown on the survey. The home was built in 1954 and predates current rear yard regulations. Exhibit number 10 is considerations. The variance would meet the intent of the zoning ordinance since it won't expand the footprint of the home. The applicant provided an exhibit showing how the request would cause a consistent streetscape along Heathwood Road to continue. So this orange line is the lineup of the homes on the road. The applicant states that the variance would allow a roof line that aligns with the rest of the home. Granting of the variance would not cause safety concerns, and the applicant states that the existing porch needs to be torn down due to issues with the footers. So you can see how the roof does not line up there. Exhibit number 11 is a photo of the property, and that's the end of my presentation if you have any questions.
Is anybody on the board have questions for Lisa?
So the driveway is not on Heathwood, the driveway is on side street, Woodlark.
Correct, it's on Woodlark Lane.
Okay. That's all the questions I had for Lisa.
Hamilton, you have a question? Okay. And Terry said there's nobody here in opposition, right?
Correct, Chair, no opposition.
All right, great. All right, hearing no other questions from the board, is there a motion to deny or approve the variance?
Motion to approve.
Okay, there was a motion made to approve the variance.
Williamson, second.
All right, by?
Hamid.
Mr. Hamid, and a second by Mr. Williamson. Now we move into a roll call vote. Ms. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, yes.
Mr. Court?
Yes.
Ms. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Wilson, yes. Now we're going to review the finding facts and conclusions of law. Is there a motion to?
Make a motion to approve the finding of facts and conditions of law as written.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there was a motion to approve the finding of facts and conclusions of law as written by Ms. Dryden and a second by Mr. Court. Now we move into a roll call vote. Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Ms. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Okay, Wilson, yes. Okay, that concludes case number 2023-015. Now we will move to case number 2023-016. Still sticking to the recommended agenda.
Oh, thank you.
Is anybody here speaking in opposition to this case?
No.
Okay.
All right, this next case is a setback and rear yard variance request. The applicant is requesting two variances to allow the development of a single-family residence on a nonconforming vacant lot. A 10-foot variance from the required 30-foot front setback and a 20-foot variance from the required 40-foot rear yard. And I'll give you a minute to look over your findings.
Okay, Lisa, you may proceed.
Exhibit number one is a vicinity map of the property. Exhibit number two is a zoning map. The zoning is R4, single family, and the property is located in the Lake Wiley Protected Area Watershed Overlay District. Exhibit number three is an aerial map of the property. Exhibit number four is a close-up aerial map of the property. Exhibit number five is background. The property can be seen as a larger rectangular parcel on a 1980 zoning map. So outlined in red here and highlighted in yellow is the original triangular or rectangular parcel. Sometime around the mid-2000s, Rightofway was acquired for I-485 and Rhine Road, and that decreased the size of the parcel, and now it's triangular in shape. So this is the 1980 zoning map overlaid across the aerial photo of the property. So you can see that Rhine Road came through and I-485. Exhibit number six is the variance requests. There's a required 30-foot setback and 40-foot rear yard, which you can see to the left, and they leave little room for development. To the right is the requested variances of 10-foot from the front setback and 20 feet from the rear setback. So that would give them a much larger building envelope. Exhibit number seven is the variance criteria. And I won't read all of them again, but they're from the zoning ordinance, and all of them must be met to make a decision on the variance. Exhibit number eight is considerations. Staff finds the request meets the standards for granting a variance. Hardship results from strict application of the ordinance because when the setback and rear yard are imposed on the property, there's only five feet of building depth in the center. And with the requested variance, there'd be 35 feet of building depth, and that would allow for a single-family home. The hardship results from conditions peculiar to the property because over half of the property was acquired for improvements to Rhine Road and I-485. The lot now has a regular triangular shape. Exhibit number nine is considerations. The hardship didn't result from actions of the applicant, who purchased the property in 2022. The requested variance meets the intent of the ordinance since it will result in a permitted building depth of 35 feet, and that's consistent with other homes along Rhine Road because they range in depth from about 55 feet to 30 feet in depth. The variance will uphold public safety and will accommodate a 20-foot driveway, ensuring adequate parking and maneuvering area and allow for visibility and pedestrian safety. Exhibit number 10 is a photo of the property. You can see the property is currently vacant, and that's the end of my presentation if you have any questions for me.
So they want to build a single-family home in the triangular spot of that lot?
Correct. So with the requested variance, this becomes the compliant building footprint, so they would be able to build within that area.
And then the original lot with the star, is that going to be part of the property too, or is that?
No, that was acquired for Rightofway for Rhine Road and I-45.
Okay.
Lisa, is the 20-foot driveway is going to come from Rhine Road? Is that where it's going to come in?
It would have to because that's the only street frontage, yeah. So Rhine Road cuts across down here.
So is it going to be horizontal to the property? I'm just trying to get a visual of where the driveway is going to go.
Yeah, so this is 20-foot right here.
Right.
It's a little deceptive, it doesn't look that big, so they could put the driveway anywhere along there.
Thank you.
And the applicant owns the property currently?
Correct.
All right, are there any other questions for Lisa on this case? Yep, yeah.
No, I have no questions, thank you.
All right, hearing none, is there a motion to approve or deny the variance?
Motion to approve the variance.
Okay, motion was made to approve the variance by Mr. Court, is there a second?
Williamson, second.
Second by Mr. Williamson? And now we move into a roll call vote. Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
And Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, yes.
Mr. Court?
Yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Okay, Wilson, yes. Now we will review the finding facts and conclusions of law?
I make a motion to approve the finding of facts and conditions of law as written.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion was made to approve the finding, facts, and conclusions of law by Ms. Dryden and seconded in by Mr. Court. Now we move into a roll call vote. Mr. Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Ms. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Wilson, yes. So that concludes case number 2023-016. Now moving to our regular agenda. We have case number 2023-014. Terry, is anybody here in opposition?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, this next case is on the regular agenda, but staff does feel that it meets the criteria for granting a variance. But we wanted to put it on the regular agenda in case you have any questions for the applicant.
Okay.
And I'll give you a minute to look over your findings, just let me know when you're done.
Okay, Lisa, you may proceed.
So this is a three-foot variance request for the required 30-foot front setback for the compliance of an existing home. Exhibit number one is a vicinity map. Exhibit number two is a zoning map. The property is zone R3, single family, and it's located in the Lake Wiley Protected Watershed Overlay District. Exhibit number three is an aerial map. And exhibit number four is a close-up aerial map. Exhibit number five is background. In 2022, a building permit was issued for a single-family home, and it correctly noted that the front setback was 30 feet. Exhibit number six is the variance request. After the home was constructed, an as-built survey showed a 2.61-foot encroachment into the 30-foot setback. So the applicant is requesting a variance of three feet from the 30-foot setback for compliance of the new home. Exhibit number seven is the variance criteria, and all of the criteria must be met. Exhibit number eight is considerations. Staff finds the request meets the criteria for granting a variance. Strict application of the ordinance would cause a portion of the home to be demolished. The hardship results from conditions peculiar to the property. The applicant states that they thought the 30-foot setback was measured from the pavement. So Rockhaven Drive is the road in front of the property. The right-of-way of Rockhaven is about 60 feet wide. The actual pavement width is 15 feet. So there's about 22 and a half feet between the actual pavement and the edge of the right-of-way. So from the home to the pavement, it's about 50 feet. Exhibit number nine is considerations. The hardship didn't result from actions taken by the applicant or property owner. The applicant states that the encroachment is an inadvertent error because they didn't have a survey prior to the home's construction, and they thought the property extended to the pavement. The applicant states they became aware of the encroachment when they got the survey after construction. The request is consistent with the zoning ordinance because the 2.61-foot encroachment is minor and not easy to detect. There's a two-foot administrative deviation provision in the code, but this exceeds that encroachment by about half a foot. The requested variance upholds public safety. There's a garage on the front of the home and a required 30-foot garage setback for the property. Even though the garage setback is less than 30 feet, the garage is located about 50 feet from the actual pavement, so that would meet the intent. Exhibit number 10 is a photo of the property, and that's the end of my presentation if you have any questions.
So Lisa, if I'm looking at this right... So Lisa, if I'm looking at this right, I'm looking at the findings and facts. So it looks like after the home was constructed, the survey showed that there was an encroachment on the required setback. So they're trying to correct that as well? Am I reading that right?
Yeah, so that that's the variance request is the home's encroaching into that 30-foot. This is the 30-foot setback, and the home's encroaching 2.61 feet. So the variance request would remedy that.
All right.
Lisa, is this the only house on the street that this is affected by? Was this an empty lot or a rebuild, or are there any other homes that are conceivably going to be come before us with this same setback issue?
Yeah, so it's an established neighborhood. And this was a lot created. It was split off. It was all one big lot with the lot next to it.
Also, board members, the applicant is here, so if you had questions for the applicant, of course, we have to swear them in, but I just wanted to let you guys know that. Yeah. Does anybody have questions for Lisa?
I don't think I have anything specific. I don't, there are no big pedestrian corridors that come through here that would require a sidewalk or, I mean, it may have a future sidewalk, but it's not a main thoroughfare for pedestrians.
No.
Are there any other questions for Lisa or if there are any questions for the applicant?
Slides, but if there's no more questions for city staff, then I'll let Danny speak.
Do you want to present your slides just for? Okay, I'm getting to it. I'm getting to it. I was just asking this one. All right, I have to swear you in if you wanted to. All right, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter at hand? Okay. And for the court reporter, if you can please state your first and last name as well as your address?
It's Daniel Medina, and my address is 1827 Birch Heights Court, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28213.
Okay, all right, great. All right, so you may proceed with your presentation.
It's really just the documents submitted for permit and what the city response was that they always emphasized the 30-foot setback. So when we went to what we thought was 50, we thought we were fine. But in their notes, it mentions the 30-foot front setback in the plot plans. It also mentions the 30-foot setback. In our mind, going 50, we were more than okay.
What happened? Well, if there are no questions for the applicant, thank you very much for coming in today. And we're about to vote on your on your request. Okay, is there a motion to approve or deny the variance?
Motion to approve the variance.
Okay, there was a motion made by Mr. Court to approve the variance. Is there a second?
Second, Williamson.
All right, a second by Mr. Williamson. Now we move into a roll call vote. Mr. Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Wilson, yes. All right, now we're going to review the finding, facts, and conclusions of law. I didn't really see anything that needed to be changed on that. Is there a motion to approve the finding, facts, and conclusions of law as written?
Move to approve.
All right, motion to approve the finding, facts, and conclusions of law was made by Mr. Court. Is there a second?
Hamid, second.
All right, second by Mr. Hamid. Now we move into a roll call vote. Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
All right, Wilson, yes. So that concludes case number 2023 dash 014. As I mentioned earlier, case number 2022 dash 051 has been continued to May as well as our first case on the recommended agenda. So that will leave us with the approval of February meeting minutes. Is that is that here? It's probably buried and everything, right? Okay, I see it. All right.
I make a motion to accept the February 28th minutes.
And I'll second.
Okay, there was a motion made to approve the February 28, 2023 minutes by Ms. Dryden, and there was a second by Mr. Court. Now we'll move into a roll call vote. Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, yes.
Ms. Williamson, Mr. Williamson, excuse me.
Williamson, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
All right, Wilson, yes. So that approves the minutes from February has been approved. Is there anything else that we need to discuss that's not on the agenda today?
No, Chair.
Okay. All right, hearing none, and you look like you're about to say something. Okay.
Well, I believe that we were going to provide some training. Are we still going to do that today? Yeah, okay, so I'm just asking you not to, you know, adjourn the the meeting. We can take a recess, but it's still like, you know, the public meeting would continue. We've took a short recess. I need to run upstairs to my office.
All right, so I'm trying to think how you do this again. So the meeting will, I guess, sit in recess until, how long is the training supposed to last?
I just need about 10, five, 10 minutes to run to my office. I think this was originally intended to be over lunch, but it's really early, so.
Okay, so I'll say I'll say it will be in recess until 10:05, and then we can come back and adjourn the meeting. So I guess we can do it in here then, and the camera's off? Okay.